I'd like to make people jump. I'm going to call the June 3 meeting of the Westinway City Council to order and invite you all to stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I was trying to delay as much as possible. Please sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Four members present.
Okay, Ryan, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are. We have two consent agenda items that staff is recommending be removed. Item 4G1, purchase a body worn camera and in-car camera systems, and item 4K, the amended development agreement with JGC Holdings. And then also, item 5B, Village on Jordan Creek PUD amendment. We're recommending that be changed to a motion to continue that item to June 17 when we expect the full city council to be present at that meeting.
Okay, so say it again, 4G1, you said?
4G1 and 4K.
4G1 and 4K. Okay, with those changes, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Seconded.
If it's moved and seconded, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, moving on to Citizens Forum. Anybody that would like to address the council on any item that is not either part of new business or public hearings, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record, and we will start with Gary Lefler.
Gary Lefler, 1235 11th Street, Westinway, Iowa. Just a couple things. Number one, I want to see that Chief Scott is here. And when it just kind of illustrated when I was here the last time, something we talked about, because the shop was broke into, this is within the last couple of weeks, four wheeler was stolen out of the shop. It was my four wheeler. My grandsons, we were going to come over and go for a ride, and he says, "Granddad, where's the four wheeler?" Says, "It's over there." He says, "No, it's not." So someone had forcibly broken the door handle off and had stolen the four wheeler. I called, notified the Westinway Police Department, thinking it was probably stolen for drugs or something that was going to be fenced and it was never going to be seen again. So I'm up at Yellow River and I'm fishing. I'm having a great day on brown trout. I get a call from the Westinway Police Department. They said, "We have got your four wheeler." So, Westinway Police Department gets a huge shout out. Somehow, they took my red four wheeler though and painted it black. So my girl said, "Just put some Batman stickers on it and you'll be good, Dad."
There you go.
It kind of illustrates the point that I've been making the last couple of times I've been here, that to go on with that, with the project that you want to go on over there, I really do think that you have to incorporate some kind of physical presence of somebody being there. Because I was talking to the people at the Jordan House, and it's only a matter of time before they say, "Forget the four wheeler. Let's take the shotgun that John Brown gave to them," something that we can't replace by insurance. So, I still think that there is that one building there that we used to use for our old shop. I think it should be repurposed into some kind of residence. Because I think that then the opinion would be is, okay, we'll put gates on the access to it. Well, then the kids are just going to come someplace where the gates aren't, and you're still going to continue to have problems. So, that's kind of the one thing. The second thing is, and I know Chief Scott's probably aware of this, but when you go on 19th Street and you turn on the Grand, and of course, you're looking to your left because that's where your oncoming traffic is coming from, to make a right-hand turn. And this has happened to me almost twice now. But if there's an oncoming bicycle from my right, and they don't have to stop, those oncoming bicycle that, because I'm not looking that way, it's happened to me twice, and he put on his brakes, almost went over the top of his handlebars to stop. I would make some kind of a recommendation that on some of these stop signs that are in that area, that you put a flashing red light, I know it would cost some money, but I, you know, that could have been a serious injury. And that's happened twice. That, hey, bikers, don't stop, or something to notify when you go up to that uncontroll, to that area, because you're not looking to the right, you're only looking to the left. So, that's another observation. Then this happened to me today, and hopefully, we can save this city some money here. This morning, I got a call, I think it was Joel, somebody that had been in contact with Ed ARP, something about closing off the water that had come to the camp. And it was across the street on Fuller, and he says, "They want us to dig up, dig the pit here and turn the water off." And the problem is, he showed me the hole, and the hole, there was all kinds of fiber optic stuff, and they says, "For us to dig this hole is going to be really tricky." I says, "Well, we just put a new turn-off valve across the street from here." And he said, "It would save this," he said, "He said it would be somewhere between $15,000 and $20,000 to dig that hole." And I said, "There's a turn-off right there." I said, "Just," and he said, "Something, somehow, probably the city council, you're going to have to work with the Water Works Department, because their protocol is to put a, to turn it off, or, you know, to put a shut-off down in that hole." And so, I was just thinking that, and the problem with that, as him and I discussed it, was this. If you ever decided that you wanted water on that side again, you're going to have to go in there, re-dig the hole, and do it all over again. So, I would meet with Ed ARP, you know, I'll give you my telephone number, 641-777-7352. But I think that this is just, even the guy says, "This is too common sense for us not to do this and save the city and the taxpayers a bunch of money." So, that was kind of, that's the full Gary Lefler story. I'll see you at the Grimes Parade on Saturday.
Appreciate it.
Gary, don't walk away. I got, I got a couple of comments.
Okay.
So, the four wheeler that was stolen was, what shed was this in? Because isn't this city-owned property?
It's the building that we have leased from the Jordan House. So, you have the Jordan House is like right here, and then there's that brown shed that's next to it that has a garage door on it. So, our lease is with the Jordan House, and we've got a four-year lease with them.
For storage?
Yes.
Interesting.
Okay.
Okay, and so, the bikes at Grand and South 19th, okay?
Yes.
That's a, that's a trail.
Yes.
People walk on that trail?
Yes.
Okay, so, I would think that a prudent driver would be making sure that not only do you have no traffic coming to your, from your left, but that you've got no people walking across South 19th from that trail. Because when a vehicle is stopped, the pedestrian has the right of way. Am I correct? That that's the law? So, I would think that-
Excuse me for a minute, Kevin, but a pedestrian, you're easily going to see, but you're not anticipating a bicycle coming down that same sidewalk at 20 or 25 miles an hour, maybe even 30 miles an hour.
My point is, though, that you need to be looking.
True.
You don't, you're not going to know if that pedestrian's there unless you look. So, if you're looking, you're going to see the bike. Because we've talked about this before, about having stop signs on the trails, that the bikes have to stop. Problem is, and correct me if I'm wrong, that there's no law that says they have to, have to follow that. It's a, it's a suggested stop, not a, an enforceable stop.
All I'm encouraging, all I'm encouraging is this. The way I grew up is an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And I'm going to just say, I would just suggest that you put on there, even, it doesn't even have to be a flashing thing, but just, you know, be aware of bicycles, of cyclists, or something on that.
Well, Gary Rank is in the back. He's taking notes on this. And the issue that we have is, we have to follow what's called MUTCD, the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's like our traffic bible. So, it tells us what we can and cannot do. We've got to only have warrants to be able to do something like this, and then we can only do certain things. But we will take a look at it and see if, if the area you're talking about warrants some, I don't know what, flags on the, on the stop sign or what. But I think Kevin is right, too. The bikes-
To your point, Kevin, you're right.
We've talked about this before, and it's, there's other areas in the city where the trail goes through neighborhoods, and it's just people got to get used to it, and they got to creep up and kind of look. But we'll see if there's something we can do. But if MUTCD doesn't, doesn't call for it, doesn't warrant it, doesn't have a solution to it, I'm just not sure what we can do.
Your point's well made. Thank you.
And the third is, the water shut-off you're talking about, that water shut-off goes to what?
That water shut-off comes from off the main.
Right.
And it comes across the street. So, you've got, there's a fire hydrant over here, then across the street, then that shut-off goes there. Then that goes to that pit that funnel, that had the water access for the entire camp, for the church, that the church had. So, that's where that shut-off is at.
So, there's a meter pit down there?
There's also a meter pit, but it's just a little bit farther. It's more over by that other building.
But what pit are you referring to?
The shut-off that I'm referring to is the shut-off that every property-
I know. I'm 31 years at Water Works. I know, I know what water shot. I'm just trying to figure out, the shut-off that you're talking about on the opposite side of the street, it went to a point, and then went to the different, so, because you mentioned a pit two different times.
Okay.
So, it's come on to the property to a pit?
Okay, between, you got the fire hydrant, and then you come across the street, you get your sidewalk, and right there is where you use your T shut-off. And from that, from that T shut-off, it goes to the pit. So, what I was saying to the guy, the church has paid, I think, $4,000 to put a new T shut-off there. So, that's where that is. The actual pit in the meter is a little bit farther under the property on the other side of that utility shed, or that, that garage.
Okay, but for now, they've got it shut off on the opposite side of the street?
Uh-
Or at the-
Right now, well, when, when I left the property, we had it shut off down in the pit where the meter is.
Okay.
It's, to my knowledge, it's not shut off at the, at the T turn-off.
Okay.
In the Senate, we would call point of order here. This is not our jurisdiction, but we will, we will take this under advisement. We will talk to Christine in the Water Works Department and let them know of this, and see if there's something that we can do to save taxpayers' money.
Well, my wife said, "If we save them 10 grand, we'll take half in small domestic bills."
I appreciate that, but if we-
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you guys.
You bet.
All right, Gary.
She's got the Westinway Police Department. That was a home run. Thank you.
Thank you, my friend. Good to see you. Is there anybody else for Citizens Forum, either in the chamber or online? If you're online, just a reminder, hit star six, not pound or hashtag six. Star six to unmute yourself. Give us your name and address for the record, and we ask that you keep it to five minutes or less. Is there anybody else for Citizens Forum before I close it? Okay, Citizens Forum is closed. We'll now move on to item three, Mayor, Council, Manager Report, Other Entities Update. And we'll start down to my right here with City Manager Tom Hattan.
We're still continuing on the brush pickup through the, out the city. We're moving from east to west, and, and some brush magically appears after we've been passed, but we'll, we'll try to get it the best we can, and hopefully be done this week with it. So, after this, we're going to look at the policy and see if we can get smaller areas that we can claim, or say those areas will pick up. We know that'll still be a challenge for folks. And then, the other thing, we got to get back people, people back on the, on the compost program, because it's, it's-
Hello?
Hold on real quick, please, ma'am. We were doing-
Okay, I tried to speak during the last time, but you guys had me muted.
Okay, Amy, hold on real quick, please. Why don't we take, why don't we take a timeout in the middle here?
Yeah.
All right, go ahead, Amy. Why don't you give us your name and address for the record, and you've got five minutes. Please keep it civil and respectful.
Hi, I'm a whistleblower.
We know.
Public corruption whistleblower. Yeah, but the audience doesn't know.
Okay.
And I noticed, I noticed that for almost a year now, that you guys are not in sync with your YouTube account, your live YouTube account, and, you know, being able to call in. Is there any way that you can fix that?
You know, I don't, I don't know that the YouTube, I think the YouTube, like, you're joining live right now. I think we have that capability. And then through YouTube, I think you can watch a council meeting after it's happened. So, I think they're two separate things, but we, we do-
There is a YouTube livestream, but there's a delay on that.
Okay, there is a YouTube livestream, but there's a delay. Why we have the two separate, I don't know specifically.
Actually, me speaking to you on the phone is ahead. I had to, I finally got on and tried to figure it out for myself and realized that on the phone, it's ahead. So, if you're not getting anybody to be kind of boisterous like I am, a whistleblower, they are not going to- gonna know what to do. They are not gonna figure it out, take the time to figure it out like I do, that the telephone, when you call in, is ahead, rather than it's slower on the YouTube channel. So if you're waiting patiently, waiting on the YouTube for your time to speak, it's already too late.
So we, we do have something on the agenda, we do have something on the agenda that says members of the public wishing to participate telephonically may do so by calling, and we've got a number and entering the conference ID. That's how we're encouraging people to join. So we'd encourage you to do that as well.
Yeah, YouTube is just for somebody to watch it, not to, YouTube, Amy, is for somebody to basically watch what's going on with the council meeting, not to necessarily participate in the meeting. So as the mayor said, on the council agenda, it has that phone number and conference ID number. So to, to go off of YouTube is not the way to do it.
Hi, okay, who am I speaking to, please?
Councilman Trevillian.
Hi, hi, Kevin.
Hello.
Uh-
Okay, Amy, you've got, you've got three minutes left, and I want you to get it all in, so.
In the past, in the past, I was not hearing the council meeting at all on the phone. Okay, so you must have changed something to where I can actually hear what's going on.
I know there's in, I don't know exact, I don't know exactly the, the date that this took place, but I know that Valley Junction Foundation contacted me on a text and said, hey, we can't hear you on the phone. And so we took care of that through the audio system that we've got here. I have never been notified by anybody, and I know a lot of people that do follow on the phone with it, and on the internet and whatnot. So I, I can't explain why you were having issues, but-
Did you get my email, did you get my email I sent today, saying no to construction unless you pay what my property value is worth? Did every single council member, attorney, city manager, everyone, did you get my email today?
I, I don't know if I received your, I don't know if I received your email today, but I received the same email several weeks ago from you.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great. Same, same email with just a little bit more information, because I noticed you guys don't mention anything, uh, online, or this, that, and the other regarding the answer. And I saw today on F that you are going to be speaking something about Mill Civic Parkway and my neighbors west of me. But, you know, as always, unless you contact this, the, uh, city hall to find out exactly what you're gonna do, nobody knows. And when you're a whistleblower like me, nobody contacts me to tell me what's going on. And, and I never get a reply from any city council members. All right, that's it, you guys. Have a great day.
All right, you too, Amy.
I'll be listening from my phone. Bye.
Sounds, sounds good. Take care. Okay, anybody else for Citizens Forum? This is also why I try to give a little bit of delay, sometimes say going once, going twice, you know, take a little bit longer in some of the public hearings. We've had some people trying to get through, some technical difficulties on, on different ends. So anyway, anybody else for Citizens Forum, either online or in the chamber? Okay, hearing none. We will go back to our regular scheduled program, where we left off with City Manager Tom Hattan talking about the citywide cleanup after the storm.
Well, this week's the citywide cleanup for everything, so that's, be aware of that. And then we are gonna have to, we have a great program called Compost-it, that, that sells bags and stickers at the grocery stores and hardware stores, and that pays for itself. It's pay as you throw. And a truck goes by our, every citizen's house every week. So we encourage people to use that program, because on smaller events, you still could have some branches and whatever come down, or some leaves, or whatever you wanna bag. But that way, you bag it, and you pay, if some people wanna mulch their grass, they don't, but if you don't wanna mulch your grass, and you wanna collect it and put it in a bag and have it collected, it will be done every week. The same with the bundles of sticks and limbs, those are also handled. And it's a cost for a sticker in a bag, however, that's the cost to pick it up, to process it, and turn it into compost. So we will do some more education and get it back out there to reignite that program. Some people said that even though we had the program, which was amazing, so we, apparently, I wanna work with Metro Waste Authority to get the word out to our citizens to use it as we go forward, as much as possible.
Yeah, I mean, you and I talked throughout this entire thing, and I, I think, you know, I'm glad that we made the decision to pick up the debris after the storm. I think that, that made sense to do it. But I, I think there's just a lot of education that needs to be done out there. I, I don't know how we do that, Facebook, all the social media. We've gotta do something. Because, you know, the composted program, as you said, it's a pay as you throw. I love that little pun there. But I, I don't think that homeowners understand what their property taxes pay for exactly. I mean, in a snowstorm, your property taxes pay for that. Debris down after a storm event, your property taxes do not pay for that. And I don't think people understand that. I think, they think that's an automatic service of the city that the city provides. I think they also don't understand that we have to pay attention to FEMA, and that there are regulations that FEMA have out there, and that if the city picks up when it's not warranted, you know, that we have a certain level that we measure the, the damage to determine whether or not the citywide pickup after a storm is warranted, and that if it's not warranted, that we potentially could get in trouble with FEMA. And I, I don't know that we, as a council, understand the consequences completely of that, and we probably need to have education for us, as well as our residents. You and I both know this, it's hard to get that word out there. You gotta put it out, and put it out, and put it out, and then somebody still says, I don't know anything about FEMA and any penalty that you might get. Why aren't you picking up my sticks? So I think that education piece is really important, and that goes for a lot of the different programs we provide. Sidewalk program that we have, that's another thing. No matter how much education we put out there, I don't know how many years we have where somebody gets cited that they have to fix their sidewalk, and they say, what is this? I've, I've lived here sixteen years, and I've heard nothing about this sidewalk program. Well, it's, it's out there, we have it, we've had it forever. We just gotta try to do what we can to educate people on it. So it's gonna be a big thing going forward.
Tom, I've got one question. You made the comment that, you know, the, the storm debris pickup is continuing, but you made this, the statement that there's branches magically occurring, or appearing after we've gone through an area. We're not going back onto those streets, are we? Because it's been publicized that it needed to be out last week, we're coming through. So it's been, what now, two weeks, almost, that this happened? And if we, I mean, why would we go back if we've gone through my neighborhood, and debris gets picked up, and then somebody puts more debris out, well, we'll never get done. Why, I mean, I don't know why we're going back.
I think the problem is, it's hard to know if, if truly we did miss somebody, or if they put something out there. And I, and I-
How would, Russ, I understand what you're saying, but how, how could anybody begin to think that, well, I'll use my house as an example, okay? If, if my neighbors have had stuff out there, and it's been almost two weeks now, well, a week after the storm, and lined up, and they come through, and they get everybody's property, why would they think, why would anybody in their right mind, with common sense, think that they would just miss my property? I don't understand it.
We have ABL on the units that are out picking-
Automatic Vehicle Location. Yep.
Every stop that we have, we're photographing.
Mm-hmm.
And we still get the phone calls, you missed what we put out. And then you find out they didn't put it out until this morning.
Okay, but when we can prove, I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt, Gary. If we can prove we know we didn't, you didn't miss my property, why would we go back?
We normally don't. And again, we've even had some residents that have hired a tree contractor to come in and cut their stuff, and they wanna pile it on the parking as well. And again, that is something that we also don't go back and pick up. You hired the contractor, it's their responsibility to take care of it. So we're fielding probably most of the phone calls that you guys are not getting, and you got upset residents. They want us to come and pick it up, but it's like, we've already been through there.
Right.
In fact, some of the areas, we've been through twice because of the sheer amount, Thirty-Fourth Street area. And it's just picking up some of those hit and misses. So are we going back in all the residence? No.
Okay. Good.
And, and I, you know, we talked about this before we made the decision to go out. People are gonna cut their own, take this upon themselves to cut their own trees, trim their trees a little bit. I, I've seen a ton of that. You know, storm damage, but people trimming trees, and-
I won't give a particular address, but we had an individual that trimmed all the trees in his yard.
Yeah.
And then basically kinda gave us a middle finger, that said, we need to come and pick it up. How do you not go and pick that up? I'd love to have left it, but you guys would have got a phone call.
Yeah, yeah.
So-
Well, I just, I, I think there needs to be just a lot of education for the council, for our citizens on this. We need to revisit, we did this how many years ago, Kevin, like ten years ago or something? Think we need to bring it back, have some kind of a quick workshop, let us know the FEMA policies, how we get in trouble, what that looks like. Is it, you know, a, a deal where we just spent however much on this cleanup, let's just make it up, three hundred thousand dollars, then we go to actually get funding from FEMA for disaster, and they discount that, 'cause they say that's your customary cleanup?
I think there might have been some misinformation from years past. And I'm just saying that is, I think we need to go back and all of us sit down and read through the policy.
Yeah.
We just need to make sure that we're abiding by the metro-wide policy, which every agency's involved.
Right.
Again, we could have damage, and maybe Ankeny would not, or Johnston, or whoever. Again, just, the policy is what I have to live by and work with. And, you know, our conversations, that's exactly where I went, is I'm following that policy, which I assume you want.
Yep.
So, you know, nothing says we cannot change your mind, but-
Right. And, and we need to revisit that policy and take a look at it. But what if we revisit that policy? And each, the metro is a part of this entire thing, but each city has a policy, right? I mean, they're not identical, or are they all identical?
They're all pretty much identical.
Okay.
Because-
So we can't amend our own, we can't-
And again, maybe not all the present members have signed on the, off on that when that policy was originally put into play. So again, some of the original members are here, but if you wanna revisit it, we most certainly can, but it would be advantageous, so we're all on the same page.
Yeah, maybe we should take it to public services, start there, and, and then, but I think we do need a workshop, so all of us are aware of what's going on, what the policy says, what the danger of not following that policy is. I, I bet you, more than West Des Moines is gonna be taking a look at this policy and doing some education for their councils and their residents on, on this whole thing, so.
And as Chief Lou, I think, would even make the same statement. We're in four counties. So I'm also dealing with Dallas County and their proclamation, on whether or not we meet the funding levels. I have no idea yet. Our probably is around twenty-six to twenty-eight thousand dollars, just for west of Sixtieth Street. We didn't incur much damage. But, you know, east of there, Polk County, yeah.
Now, let me ask you one more question on this. The, the governor declared Polk County gubernatorial disaster area as we were going through this. When she does that, typically that enables us to apply to the federal government for funding, but would this be included in that?
You know, I can't answer that for sure.
Okay.
I'm not the emergency manager expert, so, but I would say that we'll, we'll probably stand a very good chance. And we're going to, if we meet that threshold, ask for, for that funding to come back to us.
Okay.
And we keep records of how many loads, where they were picked up, how many people we had, overtime, loaders, chainsaws, everything.
Okay. And then the, the funding, we've got an opportunity cost with your guys not doing other things that they should be doing, because they're picking up debris after the storm. That's one cost. Then we have a cost also of, I think, rental for, renting equipment, the wood chipper and all those different-
Not so much wood chipper, but with the amount that we were seeing, we rented contract trucks. So we have nine of our own out that are tandems. We also had four rental trucks.
Rentals, okay.
We also rented a few pieces of specialized equipment for just gathering brush, to be able to get rid of it quickly.
And while property taxes don't pay for this-
No.
They are gonna pay for it. We're gonna get it out of the general fund reserves, I would assume.
That would be my guess.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Gary. I think Chief Lou wants to chime in, and then we probably need to move on.
Snuck up behind you.
Yes, she did.
Craig Lou, emergency manager for the city. Yes, you're right, Mr. Mayor. When, when we ask for that governor's declaration, it starts the ball rolling on some things for FEMA. Some of that money is freed up now, you've probably seen that. It's small business associations, some other stuff for people that had damage to their home. We've been putting that out on, on social media and such. The other part of that is the PA, what we call the PA part of FEMA funding. And we've started that process already. We've been working with Polk County. I had a meeting with them again today. We're documenting what we think, our projections will be, and costs are doing that for everybody in Polk County. That money will be tallied up, and if we meet the federal threshold, we will get funding for some of this, so.
And if we get, if we do get funding, we still, correct me if I'm wrong, the city typically has a match of about fifteen percent. The state does a match of ten.
Correct.
So we'll get seventy-five percent.
Yeah, and just like the flooding of two thousand eighteen, we'll, we'll get a vast majority of it back. But, yeah, we eat some of it, just like everybody does, it was FEMA money.
Okay.
That answer your question?
Yeah, it does. And I, I just, I wanna end it by just saying this, and I, I don't know, maybe somebody else has something on this, but I, I can't even tell you how much we appreciate you and your guys, and everything that you guys went through, from driving around and trying to assess the damage, and, and make a call on whether or not we're gonna be doing a citywide pickup after the storm, to being out there day and night for day after day after day to pick up all of the debris after the storm. You know, we'll take a look at the policy and, and determine whether or not it warranted, made the right call. But I think based on what we heard from the residents and the appreciation I think that we're getting from the residents we're picking up, I think we made the right call. Going forward, I do think there needs to be some education, because I think people think that anytime there's ever any storm damage, the city's gonna come get it. We can't do that.
And I, I'd like to go back and also state that we were very quick to pull the trigger to say what our options were, because of course, people are asking what we're going to do. And the assessment, I would still indicate is minor in damage, according to the NEM's training I've had. So based off of that, the next one, would I also be a little more reluctant to give you that answer on Monday night, or would I wait a day and truly be able to look at everything? I drove pretty much the whole entire town, not every street. But again, we're also getting that pressure from Polk County or whoever to give them that number. And maybe we're gonna have to kinda put our feet in the sand a little bit, because it's bad to retract after we've already made the decision.
Well, I think people were confused. You know, we did the best to communicate to people what we were doing, what the policy was, but it was, there were many things that went out, and people just started getting confused on it, which was, was one of the issues. But, and Tom and I talked about this, and I think we talked about this years ago, too. And I think we need to take advantage of technology on this, too, and see if there's something we can put in place that people can self-report what the damage is, take a picture themselves, send it in. We know how many households we have in the city, and then based on that damage, maybe you guys don't need to be driving around as much to, to survey. I mean, it, it would seem to be a better system than what we have now with you guys manually driving around, looking at, at the city.
I, I would say this, Russ, that when you're looking what's out there for damage, a picture doesn't tell me what I wanna know. I want to see per block what that looks like. What, how much damage in a certain area, Thirty-Fourth Street and Maple? When I can drive that, then I can quantify. Looking at a picture, I, I know where you're going. It may be a time saver, but it doesn't give you the overall view of what that whole area looks like.
Right. I was just thinking, time saver in like, a certain percentage of the city, because each time you've got, you know, maybe, you know, Kevin's area got hit pretty hard. But my area barely got hit at all.
And, but if you go look at your area yesterday, or today, or whenever they went through, there was five times as much out there as there was the night of the event.
Absolutely. Because people were taking advantage and trimming their trees.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. All right, let's, let's move on. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief Lou.
Hello?
Amy, you've, you've missed your time. You had a chance to speak in Citizens Forum. You're gonna have to wait.
No, I'm speaking about the trees.
Uh, it's not, we don't have-
I have a comment about the trees.
Amy, I'm sorry. Citizens, Citizens Forum is closed.
About the trees, why are you planting them down the center if you care about danger? Why are you- Why are you planting trees down the center of roads?
Amy, you are out of order.
Why?
You are out of order.
All right.
You've missed your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on with council reports. Tom, are you done with your report? Or you still have more?
Yes.
All right. Councilman Hudson.
Mayor, anything to get an app? That's what I think. Hey, citizens could take a picture. They could put it on an app. That's all I can think of.
We're working on it.
Yep. No, but with the event that we had almost two weeks ago, um, folks of public safety, the folks at Public Works, the folks in City Manager Office to make, uh, life easier for our residents, it's been, um, an incredible effort. And I just want to say thank you. And RS, you just mentioned that thank you as well, but it's not just for the storm itself. It's not just the cleanup. There's all the bureaucratic paperwork afterwards too, as we kind of talk about how the city interacts with the county, interacts with the state, interacts with the federal government. It's really all hands on government here. So, uh, it's a lot of extra paperwork after the fact. So really, really thanks, uh, thanks to you all for that. And I want to congratulate the approximately 1,000 graduates of, uh, local high schools who are West Des Moines residents. And I wish you congratulations and best luck as you begin your new future. And whatever you do, come back and live West Des Moines. That'll do it for my comments.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilman McKinney.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a development planning subcommittee meeting this morning. Councilman Loetz and I were there. Uh, just wanted to give the folks on the council here an update on what we discussed as well as those, uh, that are watching or, or here. We had a number of units, uh, you know, multifamily and single family, uh, proposals that came forward. It was a total of 176 multifamily units and, uh, let's see, uh, 44 single family items. So total of 220 units that were considered this morning. And each one of those, uh, it was an informational meeting only, so we didn't have any discussion items per se, but just aware because I know there's a lot of consideration related to whether there's enough housing and where we're going to find housing. So it's good to see that happen. We also had a conversation about the open space. We continue to talk about that. We're going to bring forward some changes to the open space. There are some, uh, items that related to animals and some changes that are going on there. Councilman Loetz and I made sure that, uh, you know, for example, a stall family is going to be notified before we bring anything forward here. Doesn't sound like they had been notified yet, uh, but will be, uh, going forward. We're also looking to add museums to open space. I think this relates to the, uh, Legacy Woods because, uh, it is an open space area and they want to add, uh, museums into that. Um, and then, uh, the last item that we talked about was public parking, uh, in Valley Junction. We're going to, looking, looking like our current ordinance does not allow, uh, parking in Valley Junction. And so they're going to change that to allow for public parking. We're not going to have anything related to private parking at this point, like parking garages, but just public parking. So just a heads up, those are some changes you can anticipate coming through, uh, to the full council via an ordinance change. Let's see. Oh, yeah. Hey, Gary, I just want to say thank you. I know obviously there was a lot going on and, and to each member of the council that was involved. Tom, I know you spent a lot of time on the debris, uh, management. Russ, I know you did the same. There was a lot of phone calls and texts and emails. We're all dealing with our own issues, uh, and then at the same time trying to figure out how we can, uh, have the whole city picked up and, and at the same time juggling with FEMA and, and the various counties. So thank you for the long hours and the frustrations that everybody went through to, and, you know, even today, you know, talking about how we do this, you're being very reasonable. And thank you for, for the approach you've been taking, Gary. And last, I just want to highlight something, Tom. You put an analysis out last week. I thought it was pretty enlightening and I hope, uh, you know, folks had a chance to look at it, but if you didn't, I just wanted to share that, uh, as it relates to hotel motel taxes, uh, compared to January through March of 2023, when you compare last year to this year over that time period, revenues on hotel motel taxes are up nearly $200,000 or 21%. That's pretty significant in the city of West Des Moines in, in just a year. Same is true if you looked at, uh, basically three quarters of the fiscal year, we're up over, over 15% or, or nearly half a million dollars, $534,000 just on hotel motel taxes. So things, uh, you know, Ryan Penningham, looking at you and the work you're doing, uh, and so many others, I shouldn't name names because then you get in trouble, but, um, that's really having an impact. That helps Bravo, that helps the CVB, and it helps our city. So thanks for all you're doing to make this community an attraction for folks to put heads in beds and, and ultimately do all the things that we want to do. So that's all I've got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Going back to Councilman Hudson real quick.
Sorry, I forgot one thing. Um, at our Finance Administration Subcommittee meeting two weeks ago, uh, Councilman Loetz and I, we, we, uh, listened about the 2025 special partial census and just a couple of figures about that. Why would we do a mid-decade census? Um, well, just the numbers, if we, if the estimates are right, because West Des Moines' population has increased between the years 2020 and 2025, just those five years can actually earn the city another $5.6 million between 2026 and 2030 in road use tax and road use fees, that is. And I think what Councilman McKinney just said, there's tons of people coming to our town who do not live here, and yet we still have to maintain those roads. And so not just for people who live here, and obviously the census is just for people who live here, but this will help us maintain our roads even more. So the census will cost $400,000 approximately to do this special census. It will be limited though, uh, but if we can receive $5.6 million, uh, in road use tax from, um, from the additional increase in population, as well as some extra lost money, which is approximately $600,000, uh, simple math, $6.2 million in additional revenue for a $400,000 census. That seems good. So Doug, that seemed good to you as well? I think we were in the same meeting and it sounded good to me.
I, I like money.
Yeah, it sounds great. I apologize for the, for the addendum, but I had forgotten to mention that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. All right, Councilman Trevillion.
So that we can get out of here before midnight, nothing to report, Your Honor.
Short and sweet. Trust me, we're going to make up for our time here.
I'm going to be really quick. Councilman Trevillion and I today at Community Compliance, uh, recommended an ordinance change that will come to council at some point in the future. Uh, we have 30,000 rooftops plus in the city and everyone, uh, mows the city right away, um, uh, except for one person. So we're going to actually codify it and, um, and make sure that we, uh, have everybody mowing the, in the right way.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Um, okay, I will be quick as well, but I do want to say I was remiss in, in forgetting to mention Tom Haddon and all the work that he did on the decision, what to do on collecting the storm debris and also Lucinda, who was working to put out a press release and make sure that people knew what was going on. There were many, many others involved in this as well, but just a lot of, all, all hands on deck, as you guys had said. So just very, very difficult, uh, during that time to make, make the decision, make the right call, and I think we did that. So, um, also real quick, um, as you know, in my other role as Chair of the Des Moines Area Regional Transit Authority, we are looking at, um, doing a study, and I call it the study to end all studies, where we're trying to figure out a, a way that we can be more efficient, more effective in the delivery of our services, be innovative, creative. So we're going to be, um, conducting a study and we're, part of this, we're doing surveys of all of the council people in each one of the DART member communities. And so you guys should have already received, um, a survey from DART. Uh, they want to know what you feel about DART, how you feel about, um, the cost benefit of DART and all kinds of different questions. So please look at that as soon as you can and answer that. I think city managers, councils, mayors are all getting that survey. So we need to get that, uh, in as soon as we possibly can. And with that, we're going to move on to item four, consent agenda. We are going to poll, uh, item, items four C, seven, eight, and nine and vote on that and block as well as four D, uh, items 35 through 43, which we will vote on and block. And then item four M, uh, which is our proclamation, uh, for Pride Month for June of 2024. Are there any other items that any council person would like to have polled and voted on separately? Otherwise, I take a motion to approve the remainder.
Motion approved, second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item four C, seven, eight, and nine. This is, uh, liquor license, uh, renewal for come and go. Does somebody want to move approval?
Motion approved, seven, eight, and nine.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote.
Three yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, item four D, uh, items 35 through 43. This is, uh, approval of tobacco permits, um, also for the same retailer. Somebody want to move approval?
It's a move.
Second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Three yes, one abstention due to potential conflict of interest.
Okay, and then item four M, our proclamation. Can I get a motion to approve, uh, the, the proclamation?
Motion approved, second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded, and I will read, and then we will have, uh, some people come down and join us and take a picture. Whereas the city of West Des Moines recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2024 as Pride Month, and whereas the city of West Des Moines is a diverse and vibrant community that is committed to raising awareness by supporting the visibility, equality, dignity, and inclusion of LGBTQIA+ people. And whereas in support of the city's commitment to equity, we implemented the Municipal Equality Index Scorecard, a rating conducted by the Human Rights Campaign to examine how inclusive our laws, policies, and services are of LGBTQIA+ people who live and work in West Des Moines. And whereas as a result, we moved our score from 42 points in 2016 to 100 points in 2023, demonstrating the tangible impact our efforts have made in promoting a welcoming and inclusive community for all. And whereas despite our accomplishments, there is still plenty of work ahead. More education and awareness remain vital to ending discrimination and prejudice. By recognizing Pride Month, we increase awareness and provide support and advocacy for our LGBTQIA+ community. Several Pride celebrations are happening this June, including the first Valley Junction Pride Parade on Sunday, June 30th from 12 to 4. Let's stand together in advancing our nation's founding principles that all persons are born equal in dignity and rights. Now therefore I, Russ Trimble, Mayor of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, do declare June 2024 as Pride Month. Together, let us commit to embracing the diverse experiences and expressions that enrich our city and ensure all residents are afforded equal opportunities to thrive regardless of their gender, gender identity or sexual orientation. Sign this third day of June 2024. Uh, and we will vote on this and then, um, we will take a picture. We've got, I know, members from our Human Rights Commission that are here as well as, um, our Employee Resource Group as well. Is there any discussion before we vote? I would just say that I'm very proud that we took that Municipal Equality Index from 42 to 100. That, that is something that I'm extremely proud of and I have been proud of for several years. Um, we intentionally worked on that. We want to make sure that everybody is treated, uh, equally and has an equal chance to succeed and thrive and people are treated with dignity and respect. And right when we got that embarrassing score, we, we talked to our human resources folks and asked them to get working on that, to see what we could do to improve that. And everybody throughout the city has worked on improving that. So this is a source of pride for me as well. Okay, please, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, if you guys want to come down and join us. We'll pitch it out front.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Who wants to be the keeper of this? We have two copies once we leave. Thank you guys for all your work.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, item five, old business. Come on, technology. Okay, item five, old business. Item five A, the Lancaster northwest of the intersection of South 85th Street and Cascade Avenue amend the zoning map to establish land use and zoning appropriate for high-density residential developments, Bryan Properties LLC. We've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, adoption in final form, there are no outstanding issues, and no change from the previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council, uh, at our last meeting with Councilman Hudson abstaining. This was, uh, also approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Move, uh, consideration of the second reading. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Three yes, one abstain. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024 by many Title IX zoning, chapter four zoning districts and maps.
Move approval of the second reading. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Three yes, one abstain.
Okay, item five B is, is being continued to our next.
We didn't, we didn't finish that last one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Waiver of third reading.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yep, no, move to, uh, waive the third reading and approve, uh, the, in final form. Second.
Second, okay, it's a move and seconded. Please vote.
Three yes, one no.
Okay. Item five B is being continued to our, our next meeting, uh, June 17th.
Moving continuation.
Okay, we've got a motion, there's a second, move and seconded. Please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item five C, uh, ordinance amendment, amend Title IX zoning to modify regulations pertaining to the application requirements of temporary garden, uh, center permits, and this is city initiated. Again, we've got an ordinance amendment for approval, the second reading, waiver, the third reading, adoption, and final form, there are no outstanding issues, and no changes from the previous, previous reading, which was adopted unanimously by the council.
Motion to consider a second reading. Second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
Four yes, ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, Title IX zoning, chapter 16, temporary use permits.
Motion to approve the second reading. Second.
Please vote.
Four yes.
Motion to waive the third reading and adopt in final form. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item five D, ordinance amendment, amend city code, titled seven, public ways and property, uh, chapter one, street sidewalks and alleys, section five, removal of snow and, and/or ice accumulations. We've once again got an ordinance amendment for approval, the second reading, waiver, third reading, adoption, and final form, no outstanding issues, and there are no changes from the previous reading, which was, uh, approved unanimously by the last, at our last meeting.
Oh, go ahead.
Move continuation, or consideration of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, ordinance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, Title VII, public ways and property, chapter one, street sidewalks and alleys, section five, removal of snow and/or ice accumulations.
Move approval, second reading.
Second. Second.
Okay, please vote.
Move waiving the third reading and adopting final form.
Second.
Okay, please vote. Okay, item six, public hearings. Item six A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Valley West Mall, 1551 Valley West Drive. Amend Conference of Planned Land Use Map to designate multi-use high land use and establish the Valley West Mall. Planned unit development ordinance to provide for the redevelopment of the property initiated by Valley West Mall LLC, and this was continued from the May 20th, uh, meeting. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 3rd, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have received any written comments to this hearing?
The Plan Zoning Commission by a vote, vote of six yes with one abstaining, uh, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the Comp Plan Amendment and PUD ordinance.
Okay, anybody in the audience who'd like to address council on item six A, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either online or in the council chamber that would like to address the council on item six A? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution for approval of the Conference of Planned Land Use Map Amendment, and we've got an ordinance for approval, the first reading, to establish the PUD. This item, as I said, was deferred from the May meeting, and there are no outstanding issues. Does somebody want to move approval of the resolution?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay, now does somebody want to move consideration of the first reading?
Motion to consider the first reading.
Thank you.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes, ordinance amendment, official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2024, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter Nine, Planned Unit Development District pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Motion to approve the first reading. Second.
Please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item six B, we are being asked to continue to the June 17th meeting to provide additional time to confirm and finalize documents.
Motion continue.
Second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item six C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of property to Herd Land Company LLC, 2.82 acres, generally located near southeast 11th Street and Veterans Parkway, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 30th, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have received any written comment to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience who'd like to address, uh, the council on item six C, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either online or in the chamber that would like to address council on item six C? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed, and we've got a resolution opening, closing the public hearing and approving conveyance of the property interest to Herd Land Company LLC, and there are no outstanding issues.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay, item six D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider conveyance of property to Herd Real Estate Services, Inc., 0.54 acres, generally located near southeast 11th Street and Veterans Parkway, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 30th, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience who'd like to address council on item six D, please come to the podium, give us your name, address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody either in the chamber or online that would like to address council on item six D? Okay, hearing and seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we've got a resolution opening, closing the public hearing and approving conveyance of the property interest to Herd Real Estate Services, and there are no outstanding issues.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just for this particular item and the previous item, I know both Jessica and our city attorney, Greta, have spent a lot of time on this, working through it, so just wanted to thank them.
I echo that.
Yes, I, I would echo that, and I would jump in, and I would thank, uh, Tom Haddon and, uh, Jamie Letzring and everybody else that has been working on this since 2019. So it's been, been a long time coming. I'm glad that we can put this thing to rest. All right, please vote.
Four yes.
Okay, item six E, this is the time and the place for a public hearing to consider southeast fire training facility, 1998 southeast Moffett Lake Road, conveyance of electric easement, uh, to Mid-American Energy Company, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 28th, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience who'd like to address council on item six E, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself and do the same. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Okay, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. We've got a resolution opening, closing the public hearing and approving conveyance of, of an easement to Mid-American Energy Company for underground electric near southeast Moffett Lake Road, uh, where our future training, uh, fire, training, fire training facility will be, and there are no outstanding issues. Somebody want to move approval?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.
All right, item six F, this is the time and the place for a public hearing to consider Mill Civic Parkway, Sugar Creek, and Fox Creek Crossings, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Uh, Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
May 17th, 2024, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments to this hearing?
None, Your Honor.
Okay, anybody from the audience who'd like to address council on item six F, please come to the podium, give us your name and address for the record. Anybody online, hit star six to unmute yourself. Is there anybody that would like to address the council on this item? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. We've got two resolutions and a motion, which we can take at the same time, and there are no outstanding issues. And while we can't do the full project as we originally initiate, or intended, uh, it's gonna be great to get this large chunk of the project done, and we are also getting a very competitive bid, uh, as the engineering estimate, uh, the bid is quite lower than the engineering estimate. Does somebody want to move approval?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, it's a move and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, please vote.
Four yes.[1693.01]